Out of courtesy and respect to the church community who is hosting the event, I shouldn't say it's hosting, who has lent us their facility to host the event, I would just want to disclose publicly that this is not a twinning of the church with the political organization of the Antigo Labor Party. It is merely a community facility that we have asked them to use, and the pastors and leadership of the church has consented to that. So lest that anyone draws any conclusion about the Pentecostal Assembly on the right in this event, it has nothing to do with that. It's only the use of the facility. Having said that, I'm going to invite our friend and colleague and comrade Gavin Jeffers to invoke God's presence on the proceedings. Gavin?
Good evening all, let's stand and pray. Before we pray, could you kindly put your phones on vibrate or silence? Alright, let's pray. Dear heavenly Father God, thank you for the opportunity to gather here to discuss the business of the people. We pray that as we are gathered here tonight, Lord God, that you give us the strength, the wisdom and the knowledge to move forward, oh God, and that you protect us through this journey, oh God. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Poverty, full employment, equitable distribution of wealth, and equality of opportunity and justice. Have a seat please. Good evening comrades, friends, constituents of the Bishop Gate Street and the environs. Again, welcome. My purpose and the purpose of the panel who is here tonight is for one purpose, is to have a discussion with you about the housing conditions that has prevailed in this community for well over six decades. It should be noted that as a boy, from the tender age of eight years old until about twelve, I attended the Hill Secondary School which was located where Marcus Christopher is now located on Pope Street Street. I had an elder sister who worked right here on Bishop Gate Street with an auto mechanic by the name of Llewellyn Hill. Many of the older residents in this area will know Mr. Hill very well. And so on those occasions when I had a break from school or during the lunch period, I would come around by my sister. And my memories of Bishop Gate Street are very vivid. I remember Miss Baby used to live very close to here, if it's not on the same location. I knew her children, Patricia, well, it would be Patrick, but everyone knows, we used to call them Patricia. And we had this particular area. There was a barber, LeWise Barber Shop, that was just through Bank Alley, and I would go there oftentimes to get my hair cut. So this is an area that I frequented as a boy. In those days, I had no knowledge that time would put me into this position, where I'll be the presiding MP for the particular area. When I came to St. John's City East, this area was fondly referred to as the Old City, and it still is to today, the Old City. But the sad thing is, is that the street and the housing conditions have not changed. If I had had an accident when I was a boy going to Hill Secondary School, and I'd been in a coma for forty years, and then woke up, I would still be in a familiar place if I was hospitalized here on Bishop Gate Street. The gentleman to my right is the Prime Minister, he needs no introduction, and I apologize for not acknowledging the head table in the first instance. Let me take the opportunity to recognize our Prime Minister. Let's have a round of applause for him. The Prime Minister came to government with a vision and an ideal, and one in which he infused each of his MPs and his ministers. And the idea that we were going to use housing development as a means of empowering our people, and for giving them the opportunity to transfer wealth from generation to generation. On a previous walkthrough that he had with me, when I was giving him a demonstration of how the drain project on another part of the constituency was developing, he challenged me and he said, "Comrade Nicholas, the housing stock in Fort Road is bad." And I acknowledged, and I said, "Yes, that was true." The reality is, is that those conditions remain because of the ownership of the land. There are few significant landowners in Fort Road, and they have not allowed persons to develop concrete houses on these premises. So most of the houses in Fort Road are chattel houses, which means they're wooden houses, and they can be moved upon notice. So that condition prevails in another part of the constituency. But here, on the Old City, particularly on the undulating hill that goes up to Antigo Girls High School, that we call Bishop Gate Street, between here and North Street, the conditions are really horrendous. Now, I was encouraged because the Prime Minister did undertake as well to do some development, not without his own challenges in his own community at Boobialy. You see, Boobialy is known to be the most populated and the most densely populated half an acre on the whole island. And so when the Prime Minister moved to reorganize new housing for that area, to improve the housing conditions there, of course, it was met with some challenge. So I'm hoping that out of tonight's discussion, and as we outlay our plans going forward, for what we would be attempting to do for the housing development in this area. And my dream is before my time comes, and it will not be by next week, Wednesday, before my time comes, to the Met Office, that working with you, and working with the resources that we will avail ourselves from the government, that we will transform the Old City into a new city. I have as well on the right of the Prime Minister, someone who is going to be very important to this effort, a gentleman that I have come to know well and respect a lot, Mr. Telly Cornelius. He hails from the village of Willykeys all the way on the eastern island, but he is the general manager and the head of our National Housing and Urban Development Company, located down on Bay Street down in Villa. Mr. Cornelius is here because with his support and his assistance, he has already outlined a plan for improving the housing stock in Fort Road, in Gambles area in particular. We have already achieved an exchange of a property, a parcel of land, that can accommodate what we will call a duplex. With the scarcity of land in our community, we don't have any major land that we're going to have to, any greenfield land that we're going to have to clear and cut roads. All of the lands in City East are spoken for. So we're going to have to use some novel ways of being able to put some of this land back into productive use. And so I've been in discussion with the Prime Minister, I've said to him, "Whatever works for Boobialy, you can bet assured that I want the same to be done for the Old City." I also have an ambitious plan, and though this has not yet been fully discussed at cabinet level, I am going to adopt an approach that my political leader and Prime Minister has used before, and enunciate a vision. I see no good reason why the Public Works Department needs to be continually located in our community. It was so many, many years ago when it was first established, but clearly, the government has other opportunities and other areas where we could relocate that. And what a nice piece of property it is, Mr. Prime Minister, for us to be able to, for us to be able to put into, to repurpose it, and to build some nice townhouses, and it could serve two purposes, purposes, in the sense that while we're developing the Bishop Gate Street head end, going up to Princess Margaret School, sorry, Antigo Girls High School, we would probably want to develop that area first, so that we have a transitional area for the existing residents who are living on the hill, to be in that area, and then we will develop as phase two, Bishop Gate Street Hill. Okay? So that is my grand vision. How we get to do that is going to require a lot of details, and it's going to involve consultation. My purpose to you tonight is to say that that is the five-year plan that is before us. That is my commitment for a third term in government, which I know you, the residents in this area, have been supporting the Antigo Labor Party and myself for the past two elections. I don't expect a different result at the end of next week, Wednesday's poll, but safe to say, your interests are my interests, and your interests are in improving your family life and your family position. I'm particularly interested in the lot of the young men who are living in this area. I've said to them that I am a family man, and I'm hoping that the young men in this particular community, this part of the community, will seize the opportunity to get involved, to seek the opportunity to have and own a property alongside your womenfolk. And out of this, I can expect to see, not a retired community, there's nothing wrong, I love all of the senior citizens here, Miss Gordon, Mr. Friday, and all of the others, even, and I don't see him in the audience, he seems a bit shy tonight, Romy. But I want to ensure that at the end of the day, you have an aspiration to be able to own your own property, and it can be owned right here in the community from which you hail. I'm going to leave it at that, because I think there are going to be some questions that obviously will come from you, and I would just like to ask the Prime Minister to make his own comments about it, and to determine whether or not my vision and my objectives for this area are out of sequence with any plans that the government may have. Prime Minister?
Thank you very much, Minister Nicholas. I acknowledge all of the distinguished ladies and gentlemen here, to include the Chief of Staff, the Honorable Max Surras, and of course, Comrade Friday, other distinguished ladies and gentlemen. I'm here tonight to confirm my full support for the plan as enshrined by Comrade Melford Nicholas. It is true that there's a problem with our urban housing, and part of our thrust with a new term is to embark on a very ambitious urban renewal program, not only functioning on the renewal of the central business district, but all of the surrounding communities, to include Point, Grace Farm, here in Old City, Fort Road, Otters, Clay Hall, to literally bring a program of renewal to renew the housing stock in this country. Evidently, our people are wealthier, are wealthier than they were, let's say, four decades ago. Four decades ago, the type of property that was available or affordable to the average Antigans and Barbians was a wooden property, in many instances, or instances, a private, a private property, which obviously would have had a lifespan of maybe ten, fifteen years. So what has happened now, you'll notice that we have a number of wooden properties that are literally dilapidated, many of them in a poor state of disrepair, but are occupied by people. Many of them are actually occupied by individuals who are paying rent, so they utilize as rental properties for Antigans and Barbians, who obviously would have improved their living standards and would have moved out of these areas and gone to more affluent areas. But we have the view that it will become a major issue for us, not only in terms of the aesthetics of St. John's and its surrounding communities, but when you look at what is happening, that these properties, many of them have become the relative extent they are uninhabitable, and they are overgrown by a lot of shops and so on, and they have become a security risk in residential areas, and a health risk as well. So it's an area that we wish to prioritize in a new term by providing funding, and in some instances as well, to even assist with home improvement loans. We have a program that we are currently fleshing out at the Caribbean Union Bank, in which we'll provide housing improvement loans at a very low interest rate over a ten-year period. But I recognize many of these homes cannot be repaired, they have to be demolished and rebuilt, and evidently will need the support of homeowners. You'll recognize that in the Boobialy area, we have undertaken a massive project here, in which we'll be building one hundred and fifty homes. We've gotten a grant from the People's Republic of China, and we believe that by sometime next year, we should complete that project, and we'll be able to move in those persons who are displaced, to move them back into better climate-resilient homes. Now, this is intended to be a long-term program to rid this country of all of those inferior housing, but I took the decision to start in my area, recognizing that it is never easy to ask people to leave their existing place of abode, even though what you're doing is for their benefit. I would have had the unfortunate, unfortunate experience in which people in my committee were literally rioting when they were told initially that they had to move, but I persisted as their representative, and I think they have now bought into the vision that they will get better homes, that they will get climate-resilient homes, and even the temporary housing that we provided is significantly better than what they had before. So you would see within a matter of months, that urban renewal project taking place at the Boobialy, and as the Minister indicated, we had about a hundred and twenty homes on about three, on about just over an acre of land, one point five acres of land. Now, we'll be going up, upward, so that will create more space, so we will not lose the amount of homes, but there'll be multi-story properties, and that in itself will provide better, better, better accommodation. In fact, we'll make sure too that the new communities probably laid out, that there's some greenery and so on, to make sure that we green the area. And generally speaking, we want to ensure that all of our communities going forward, that they are greened. It's important for us to improve the, let's say, the aesthetics of the island, so our housing will come with a beautification program. So you'll find that even issues such as littering and so on will be addressed in a very serious way. So we intend to strengthen our laws to reduce littering, and our ambition is to plant at least one thousand plants per year, both flowering plants as well as fruit trees, to plant in various communities to green the island and to beautify the island. We want to make sure Antigua and Barbuda is a beautiful place to live, in keeping with the pride and dignity of our people. We recognize too that we'll have to do some work on infrastructure. In many of these communities, we have broken drains, so we'll also be renewing the community infrastructure in the various communities. And this area will certainly be the beneficiary of a renewal program, but we wanted to signal to the people of this constituency at this time, that sometime after the elections, we'll come back to you and we'll continue to consult. I see already that your representative has put together some concepts, which are very beautiful, and we'll also provide the opportunity to individuals who wish to, let's say, demolish their existing property and to rebuild a climate-resilient home, they can even get funding from the bank, so perhaps by then, our Antigua Barbed Development Bank will have the resources to provide funding as well. So there'll be multiple approaches. I mean, individuals who want to renew their properties, the government will be able to provide aggregates, provide blocks at a relatively inexpensive rate. Already, the government has a concrete plant, so we produce our own concrete. Government has a block plant, and they'll be able to buy the blocks cheap as well. We have aggregates, and very shortly, we will start or commence some sand mining with Blue Ocean, in which the government has forty percent shares. So we believe by virtue of having those inputs, and the fact that we can produce them at a cheaper price, we can help to drive down the costs of rebuilding these properties and to make them more affordable. So typically, a property that may cost ordinarily, let's say, two hundred thousand easy dollars, you may be able to get it down to about a hundred and twenty-five thousand, and that will be a cost saving of at least seventy-five thousand. You'd have noted that since we came to office, we have built over one thousand homes, and generally speaking, those homes have been subsidized to the extent that we have put in the region about a hundred thousand dollars minimum into the pockets of each homeowner. So this urban renewal program will be no different. It will give you properties that are significantly more, or let's say, more valuable than the amount that you would have spent. We'll also provide duty-free concessions on the importation of any building material, material fixtures, fittings, to make sure that we help to keep the pricing down, because just as how my administration is gung ho about providing you with good educational opportunities, even at the level of university education, as well as the best quality healthcare, we are equally gung ho about providing you with good quality climate-resilient housing. So those are three critical areas in which we think we could continue to develop the people of Antigua and Barbuda, and we're now seeking to spread those opportunities evenly right across the country. So whereas we made a start in the Point community at the Boobialy area, we expect to literally build out all of these communities and to provide new housing, better housing, climate-resilient housing. You know, I said some time ago that if Hurricane Irma had directly hit Antigua, we would have had a significant amount of displacements, because truth be told, we have far more inferior housing than Barbuda had at the time. So we have to prepare for that eventualities, a matter of time before we get hit by another storm, and if within the next term, we can make a serious dent in the amount of, let's say, inferior housing within the, within the country, I think that we'll be better prepared for the next storm. And you can see that, you know, my administration is very deliberate about empowering the people of Antigua and Barbuda. Whereas others talk, whereas others criticize, whereas others ridicule, we are always thinking about your empowerment, your development. And today, tonight, we're here to consult, so you can at least have a say, and for us to have a better understanding as to your requirements and any other concerns that you may have. We also have here Mr. Telly Cornelius, who is the General Manager of National Housing, and he too will be in a position to answer your questions. But at the end of the day, I just want to reassure you that this is not a cheap election pledge, it's a commitment, and you have already seen the evidence of our commitment in terms of the amount of homes that we have built. We've built over a thousand homes so far, and we have even, you know, provided homes for the indigent. You know that we have the Happy Program in which we have built properties for the very poor, the indigent, and you can see again, a deliberate strategy to empower all the people, no matter their socioeconomic standing. We will obviously have different aspects of housing, we do not necessarily believe in rent-to-own, but we certainly will have some of those. The problem with rent-to-own is that you can't utilize equity for any purpose, because you don't have ownership. Our priority is to empower the people in Antigua and Barbuda with ownership, but you know, we're practicable and we're appropriate, and we'll also include a rent-to-own option. So I don't want to go on and on, I want to thank you all for coming out and to reassure you of my government's commitment to continue to empower you and to improve the housing stock and to beautify the entire country. Thank you.
Thank you very much, PM. I'm going to invite Mr. Telly Cornelius to give us an outline of what the National Housing Development and Urban Development Company has done so far in its short life, and as well to give us an idea of how persons can access some of these properties that they have developed. At an earlier point in time, both National Housing and Central Housing and Planning Authority had attended similar meeting at the community center in Gambles, and both had outlined that over the next eighteen months, that they will be building, I think, between them both a hundred and sixty new properties over the next eighteen months. And so through your representative, but on your own account as well, should you desire to pursue one of these properties wherever they're going to be located, so I'm expect to tell you, you will give us some insight as to where you're looking at doing some developments. I would expect that even existing residents from the Old City, who may wish to acquire these properties, to give them the insight, the cheat sheet, as to what they have to do to get on board. Mr. Cornelius?
Good evening, thank you, Minister. Let me first recognize the Honorable Prime Minister and ladies and gentlemen of City East. Now, we at National Housing, we're mandated by the government to produce affordable housing for all Antigans and Barbians. I'd want to say categorically that we have done so. We have not hit all our price points, but we have been working hard in ensuring we achieve perfection. We are striving to that mark of perfection. Now presently, the Prime Minister would have basically mentioned that we would have constructed in about, on about a thousand homes from inception, and that is accurate. We have approximately two active sites presently, that's down in, down in Denfields and over in Oliver's. We are, we are building over approximately four hundred homes in Oliver's, and an additional eighty down in Denfields. Now, individuals who are desirous of obtaining homes from National Housing, would first ask them to get an idea of what it is their budgetary standard is. We have approximately eighteen designs, individuals are free to peruse our website or walk into the office, view the designs based on your budgetary allotment, you can choose a design that fits within your budget. Now, we also do build out on your own land. Now, the, the beautiful thing about what the Minister is seeking to put together is a build out within your own community. At the end of the day, the, the Old City, as the Minister called it, is to us a marvel. The reality is, we have walked through and we've conceptualized what this whole area can look like. Now, Minister would have alluded to the fact that there's little or no available land space in the area, and of such, the technical team in doing the walkthrough would have conceptualized, I wouldn't say high-rise, but multi-story building to facilitate most of the homes that are here presently, so individuals would not necessarily lose their, but their place of residence, they'll still be within the environs if they so choose. Again, Minister Nicholas would have alluded to the fact that those who are desirous of coming out of the city and entering into the areas where we have lands and developments carrying on, that too can happen. So it's a mixed bag. We have a lot of options available for the residents of City East. The, we have some start-of-home concepts starting at one twenty-five, where individuals who are desirous of stepping out, that is an option for them. There are the more high-end options for those individuals who are professionals and want a little bit more accommodation for their residents. As it relates to, as it relates to land options, we presently have lands available in areas such as Half Moon Bay, we're opening some down in the Five Islands area, and we're seeking to make more lands available for individuals within the constituency who might be desirous of getting lands. As it relates to the rollout for the plan Minister Nicholas spoke about, the, the design team is presently, as I said before, working hard in trying to produce the concept that will best fit the area, both here and the one over in, over in up at Gambles, and we're hoping sooner rather than later, individuals who are seated here now will actually have the opportunity to grab a key. Now, as it relates to any, any additional options, individuals are free to come into the Office of National Housing, where they can get more in-depth information on the way forward. Financing options, we actually partner with all financial institutions. Prime Minister would have alluded to the option of us offering finances through CUB or through Development Bank, that too is something that we will entertain once individuals... That too is something that we will entertain once individuals walk in. So the, the, the options abroad, we are catering for all in sundry. At the end of the day, once you walk in, we'll seek to take care of everybody.
Okay, again, you would have heard from myself about the idea that this is a plan that we want to working. And of course, the Prime Minister would have as well spoken into the issue of how the plan that we are discussing now for this part of the community fits in into the whole National Housing Development Scheme. I also wanted to say something else about the old city and the hill going up to Monggo Town. And that is, I've always been concerned about the challenges that we have with sanitation in this particular area. So it is one of the things that we're going to solve with this new development program. Again, this is not to speak ill of the conditions in, in which residents exist now. What is to say that we are mindful of some of those challenges. Sometimes these unsanitary conditions where wastewater, if it has no way to go and it gathers, it can create an opportunity for vectors, for mosquito bone diseases, and for all sites, all sorts of other challenges, health challenges that it will present. So I want to say to, to the, to the residents here, when we approach this project, it is going to be done holistically. The Prime Minister has mentioned that we expect him to build green into the facilities. If you look at the envy of all of the housing projects, I would say the one at Dredge Bay, where some of the, the houses are actually equipped with solar panels to be able to assist and improve the green energy production that is available on island. Certainly because we are in a particular bright and sunny area, I would expect Mr. Cornelius that such as well will be considered. And some of the common facilities in terms of sewage treatment, these are areas that I would expect to see at the end of the project, that we will benefit immensely from that. And of course, I would not want the project to be conceptualized without the whole idea of having some type of communal recreational facility considered. I know it can't be as large as a cricket field, but certainly some means, some green space where the community can get together and to have even informal meetings like this. Even the Prime Minister and the Ministry of Health as well have been providing some leadership to us in terms of saying that we must all seek to live healthier lives. And so I would want to emphasize that that is part of the focus that we'd want to bring here. But you've heard enough from us. Just wanted to say that if we make a promise on a platform such as this, the, the next remaining years in the new term is going to be one where we're going to hold ourselves accountable to the promises that we have made. And we're hoping that you will hold us accountable too. So at the end of the day, there is nothing that the leaders of the Labour Party likes to do more than to stand up on a platform when the project is complete and to say, "Promise made, promise kept." So I, I know I'm going to want to be in a position, at the end of the day, when we get past the general elections and we get into the work, I know I'm going to have to pay attention to everything that is passing in front of me to ensure that this project remains center of my focus and attention. And I want to say to you, I've done it before. I'll tell a little story. If my personal assistant were here, she would say that I like to tell stories. But the truth be told, when I did my first campaign back in 2012, I met a little old lady who has turned out to be a very dear friend of mine. And she challenged me about the drainage system in Fort Road. And she pointed out that the drains, when they flood, they had a tendency of risking life and limb for the people who lived in the area. And so she challenged me that she wanted me to focus on that. And right away, I said, he was in Prime Minister then, I said to the political leader, I wanted a co-commitment from him in front of the old lady that we would do this project based on what she asked me. And that he would ensure that resources are made available in the budgetary system to ensure that we could do it. And he said, "Minister, that is easy." And he said, "Do you know this lady?" I said, "I've just met her." And I'm going to become better acquainted with her. He said, "Well, I have you know that she's Hyacinth's mom." Long story short, the PM and I enjoy the friendship from, since nineteen eighty-nine. So I knew who Hyacinth was, she's the mother of his first son. And so he said, so I said to the old lady, "You're a smart woman. Not only are you co-opting me, but you have co-opted the future Prime Minister as well." I'm happy to say that even though the project is not complete, I would say perhaps it's eighty-five percent complete. And I'm happy to say that the promise that I made to Tad on that fateful day in 2012 has by and large been kept. And so the promise I'm making to you now for the transformation of the old city into a new city once more will be kept by me, God willing, and with your support as well at the upcoming polls. I now invite your questions. Any questions? You could just raise your hand and...
My house got burned two thousand and, two years ago, okay? It wasn't our fault it got burned. Two o'clock in the morning, okay? And I sent a message to you constantly in the house. I said very sad morning, but um, wow, Peter Wang. I don't know if you got it, afternoon. And it's two years now upstairs in a mess. The house next door caught fire. We don't know how it, the, the house was driven into, caught fire. And it was a lack of water from the fire truck. But I was there the morning when it happened. And the house is burned. Afternoon, it's still the same way. Yes, I was there. I have to, I have to wash out in my nightie. Grab my bag and I washed out in a nightie. But then we got burned. Two years now, I'm still the same way. The same night, I sent a message to you with Peter Wang. I don't know if you got to the night. And it is afternoon, they cannot go to the bank. Because it's she's the only person working home, both of us live. And bank wouldn't lend her money because of her salary. I would like to know what will happen now as you hear about the house.
I don't want to make a commitment at this point. I'm not familiar with the circumstances. You made a claim to that the fire truck came without water. Again, I'm not saying that it is not true, but obviously I need further particulars before I make any commitment on this issue. Sorry about what happened and sorry that you lost a part of your home. We'll look at it and see what can be done. He denied that the wa, oh, so they didn't acknowledge that there was any water? Then that makes it a little more complex. Because you're making a claim that there was no water in the fire truck and you're saying the fire chief insisted that there was water. What we'll do, we'll make further inquiries. And I promise we'll get back to you. But again, you know, for me to take side and to make a determination. I'm not doubting you, but what I'm saying here, I will need to get further particulars. In fact, I will get, the fire chief is now retired, is a new fire chief now? We will get further particulars. Okay, okay, I get it, I get it.
Um, twenty, afternoon, afternoon, no help from nobody. Nothing at all, upset, same way, afternoon. Yes, yes, Mr. Nicholas was there, he, um, two days ago. He saw the estimate. I think they're sent to you. They lost everything. She lost everything upstairs. So. Everything, because she downstairs in the side room where she's uncomfortable. Well, my bedroom is there because I have to work hard with my bedroom to get it back in order. Because we lost everything.
Well, I'm sure you'll accept, assuming that the fire chief was correct, then there was no, there would no, there would be no liability on the part of the government. If indeed you are correct, then there would have been some contributory negligence. So perhaps it would not have been bred that badly. Not to say it would not have suffered some level of damage. So what I'll say here, no matter the outcome, the cabinet will make a contribution, will determine how much, and hopefully that will help you towards, you know, repairing the upper floor, yes. I cannot say how much, but we'll make a contribution. When we, when we convene in what, about a week and a half after we defeat the UPP? We'll make a contribution.
Hi, good evening, Prime Minister and Minister Nicholas, and good evening to everybody here. Minister Nicholas, I'm glad you spoke about the drainage and you concentrated on Old City. And please forgive me, I should have brought this to your attention because we do speak on, you know, a personal basis. But I need to inform you about the problem that we face in Lower Gambles. Because I realize you were speaking in depth about Old City, but remember, we love you in Lower Gambles too. We love you there as well. So on my road, Second Avenue, whenever it's raining really, really hard, the road tends to flood. And there is a backup because of that gutter next to Hadeed Dental Clinic. That gutter next to Hadeed Dental Clinic that needs to be addressed because I've been bailing water out of my house. And whenever it's raining really, really hard, I have to be praying that the water is not going to come into my house. So just to bring to your attention, and I'm not going to keep you guys any longer, when you're dealing with the drainage and you have been doing a very good job, you know, dealing with it, remember Lower, remember Lower Gambles and the gutter right next to Hadeed Clinic. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that question, Ms. Marsh, and you are indeed correct. The drain behind Mr. Hadeed is the Hadeed Dental Clinic. It's, it's a nuisance. I've already drawn this to the attention of my colleague Minister, Minister Weston at the Public Works. And the engineers have already gone there and assessed what needs to be done. I often say to my constituents that it's a question of which do you fix first? What are the priorities? So Gambles is no less one of my children, as is Fort Road and as is the Old City. I know the people of the Old City sometimes pull me hard and they say, "Everything that I do, I go over in Fort Road." Hence, I'm here tonight addressing the needs of the people of the Old City. And so you hear the contention, Ms. Garden and Mr. Friday, that the people from Gambles are now saying, "Don't forget them." So you're all my children and I have an interest in it. I will say to you, Ms. Marsh, that on my more recent walkthroughs and, and visit to the homes, I was amazed at the foul smell that comes from the lowline drains in the area. And so even though we fixed the drain behind the Hadeed Dental Clinic, which we are going to build a box drain there to get the water going into the main drain, going down to, to the McKinnon's pond, even though we fixed that, some of the drains in Gambles itself have subsided in, in terms of going below grade. And so there are some areas where the water does not flow. And then it, it congregates there and it tends to give a foul odor. So not only on First Avenue and Second Avenue, but throughout Gambles, I'm aware that the drainage system is in need of some work. And that is something that I will give my active attention to in the new term.
Good night, sir. Just to answer this lady, with the drain melted at the, the back of Hadeed, we went there several times to, to clean that particular drain. Especially where if the place is dry. We tried to get an excavator inside that so that at least twenty feet of that need to clean. And he just wouldn't allow us to go in there. He said that we will damage his yard. So once we get that particular area cleaned, at least twenty to fifteen feet, everything will flow. But he just wouldn't give us the permission to go inside.
Yes, I think for the persons who are not aware yet, Mr. Richards, who is a family member of mine, but he's also the most committed person to keeping the environmental drainage system clean. When you call Blines, he gets the job done. But I would say that, yes, it is true, but I think, I've spoken to the Hadeed brothers. And it is not so much that they wouldn't give access, but often times after the access is given, the damage that is done to the property, they have no way of recouping the cost for the damage. So the holistic approach is to build a box drain and we damage the place one time, fix it back, and get it going. But the habitual every year going in and doing it is, is something that I think they may have a concern. The Prime Minister asked a while ago whether or not we couldn't use some small equipment. I'm aware that the Department of the Environment is acquiring a smaller excavator. And there are few small excavators that are available. But based on the location that Ms. Marsh and Blind Richard spoke about, we will have to enter both their property and the O'Keefe property adjacent to it and, and certainly remove the fences, which are built pretty close to the water's edge, to be able to get it done. I think it's, Dante, you had the answer?
Good night, everyone. You spoke about the, um, the development of developing the Old City, right? Which is started from public work area, come down on the hill and those areas. But I haven't already spoke about what is going to happen to the people who actually live there. Because yes, we get to the one to do the rent to own stuff. What is going to happen to the people, what, what is going to happen to the people that actually live there?
I'm saying, we, we will approach that. I did speak of the relocation of Public Works. Oh, oh, offline, that's Public Works, no compromise. To build the town offices. May look like. Um, we need to build them here. And as we move towards redeveloping the hillside in Bishopgate Street, going all the way to Monggo Town, right up to Agatha Goldie Drive, is to do it in the second phase, such that the persons who are in Oliver's and the hill and in that area could move into whether temporarily or permanently into the new homes. And if they want to revert back to status quo Antigua, then they could come back into their own. So the idea is not to permanently dislocate anyone, but over the period of the five days, to ensure that we will develop it. But we will have to create some new land space. And I'm saying, I'm, I'm, I'm doing a bit of a riskful thing because the full cabinet is not here. But I'm saying it to the president, we have left, that we will want to relocate Public Works and use that land to build some new townhouses. And we're going to show you what one of them looks like shortly. And then I'm hoping that that address is taken some people.
So in the moving of the people and them, because majority of the people on this side, they don't live in rentals. So I want to know if, hmm? No, they don't live in rentals. So then, if you're going to move, is it a situation where they have to pay a rent to stay over there?
Let me share the experience with the Boobie Alley residents. We built a number of homes in Villa and we moved them into those homes rent-free. And there are others who we couldn't accommodate because we didn't have enough homes. We rented properties to them at the cost of the government. And many of them are fortunate too because we pay the electricity, water, the utilities. So you'll be no worse off than where you were. And as the minister indicated, it will be done on a modular basis. So if, for example, they're able to put about, let's say, 40 units here. They will move the first 40 families into those new units and then clear out a particular area, build out 40 and continue until the area is completed. So no one will be disenfranchised, no one will be displaced, no one will be put into any financial difficulties.
Good night. So how soon will these projects start and how long will they take? And where are you going to relocate us in the time being? Because is everybody on this, on this road is going to go where Public Works used to be? Because all of us can't go there. And what if some persons don't choose to want to rebuild the house? What if they want to repair their house? They don't have a choice? Is that what's happening?
LaShawn? I think Ms. Davis, what we would do is present the concepts to the community. And to show what the overall master plan would look like, including what the area where Public Works now occupies would look like. And to discuss in detail any type of transitional movement. And if there is an issue that persons may feel, look, I do not want to undertake any financial commitment. I have a chattel home. I want to be able to look at that. The land itself that is now being occupied has a particular value. And it's a question of transposing that value. When I say that, I mean, we have to put that equity back into the equation. So if you were to live, land in this area is going to retail at a very expensive rate. Already I have one businessman who continually comes at me and tries to cooby the land. He's actually asking me to encourage people to move off the land so that business persons could acquire it. And I'm not interested in that. But clearly, Ms. Davis, your question belies a concern as to whether or not you're going to move from a little comfortable economic situation and be placed in debt. That is not the concern that the government has. And we will deal with everything on its basis and on an individual basis. So we're going to work with you and you can be assured, I have two ears and one mouth, so I'll be doing more listening than talking in this endeavor. So I'll be working with all of the residents in the particular area.
And just to add, with the experience with the Boobie Alley residents, we have individuals who already retired, for example, have their own homes. Clearly, to put them into a property in which they have to pay rent or pay mortgage, that'll be inappropriate. So what we've decided to do is to swap their property for the equivalent new property. And in many instances, the new property will value significantly more than the old wooden property. So they're going to get better value. So in many instances, the government will literally underwrite the difference, will take the loss. So we're not going to put you in a situation in which you weren't paying any mortgage and you have to pay one.
Good evening. I would like to publicly thank Mr. Melford Nicholas for being the representative to put the lights on PM pasture. Because that was of major concern for residents in Lower Gambles for a number of years. My apologies for being late, so if I may have, if I decide to touch on something that might have been addressed already, my apologies. I have a grave concern regarding a private property that is next door to my father's place. I have asked many a times. They have iguanas over there. It is a safety hazard. The frustration caused me to go to social media was because a man tried to break into my father's house. And at any point in time, my father is there. If his nurse aide is not there, then I am there. There's not another man in the house to fight off a robber. I'm kindly asking for your assistance in getting, yes, I know, it's two private properties. They have overgrown trees. I have called environmental, I have called solid waste, I have called everybody. It is a safety and a health hazard. I'm asking for assistance, please. And on another note, Mr. PM, is it possible I can have a minute or two with you after this town hall meeting? Thank you. And may I also state, can we have more of these town hall meetings? So we can express our concerns, our suggestions more often? Thank you.
Good evening to everyone. Mr. PM, Mr. Nicholas. I had a piece of land that Public Works had. My bus used to park there. My vehicle used to park there. And the guy by the name Handley, I think he's from Alisane. Handley. And Chukawaka, Wakawaka, I mean, recall. They nearly killed me. They nearly killed me. They knocked out a couple of my bus glass and them. And the other thing they done to me is to take two load of sand. It's right there up to now, the sand and them still there, right back of this man, what's his name again? They used to have one cablier man, what his name, Mr. Idai. His house is right on the other side where I used to park. Mr. Idai, Mr. No, no, Mr. Oh, Lord, Mr. Tishira, Tishira. And I'm telling you, I moved my vehicle and they carried three load of sand for years. And I have the sand and them there. And yeah, I went in. Yes, I went in. I went in was to get Tishira property with the little mash, mash me have. But my pick and they again, they might tell me, me must sign money for in the bank. No, no, that my young. If me owe me the sign. But because I'm young, we can sign. My two, my son and them and tell me, Daddy, now you ever sign, so sign one. Me can't sign, not only see me, you can sign both. Come, we can borrow time, you know what I mean, PM? So when me tell them, the Antigua Commercial Bank won't give me the money, forgot the property. But me have a sign, me not sign nothing, so make me live like how me a live. Day to day, and that's all. When they take me, then take me. God bless Antigua and Barbuda Labour Party. Me can't that for hungry, why is gas stand and iron in the palm? If me tap eat love time, he know me a beggy beggy, me a beg no body. But if he say come, but what I want, nothing, but just rule, just rule. And when you rule, me devour you, man. Thank you all.
Ms. Simon, I did see your social media post this morning. And already, again, with the able assistance of National Housing, they have equipped me with another team, which they have started some work this week in the community to work alongside the other two environmental teams that are there. And so I do intend to ask them, I don't see the team leader here, Mr. Davis, to focus and bring in some relief to you in that particular area with that particular property. It's something that we're going to have to look at the legislation, dealing with some of these properties. And they are muddled all over my community, and my community is a small community. I think when we discuss this particular matter about dilapidated properties, the Prime Minister has a particular problem in his own constituency as well. Minister Joseph Marwin, Joseph speaks to the same thing in his own community. And every single village community is faced with that problem where a property, mom and dad are the only surviving relatives that live here, they die. The property invariably is intestate, meaning that mom and dad left no will. And the siblings have rivalry amongst themselves, they can't determine who should take control of the property. So it stays there and it rots and then it becomes a nuisance for everyone. So we're going to have to address the legislature and looking at that and how the government can, when it has to intervene to deal with the cleaning the property so that it doesn't become a nuisance to the neighbors. Then there is a cost involved and whether or not we make that property liable for that cost. And over a period of time, the government can then, well, not confiscate, no, the constitution wouldn't allow us to do that. But once the government acquires it and puts it back into common use, then of course, the remaining value will be the homeowners, the property owners will be fairly compensated. But we're going to have to look at the legislation. But immediately, Ms. Simon, we are going to have the team look at that property starting tomorrow, okay?
I just want to reinforce what the minister just said and to give you a little preview of our manifesto. And I'll state here that it is easily one of the finest manifestos, the best manifesto to have been written in the history of this country. It's 135 pages, 135 pages of content. And in chapter 11, page 103, it speaks to housing and beautification. And I'm going to read one paragraph for you, that's page 105. Says here that existing laws requiring unused land to be kept free of bush, weeds and other growth will be strengthened and implemented. Owners will be fined for allowing overgrowth on their land and for any intrusion on public roads and pathways and on neighboring property. Public Works will clear such land should owners continue to neglect to clean them and charges will apply. So the idea is not to disenfranchise any one of the property, but we're going to be pretty tough on ensuring that all of those derelict properties and all those overgrown lots that they address because they represent a security risk and they represent a health risk. I would have said so before you came in, and I just wanted to reinforce our commitment.
Let me just say, just make a clear indication if you wish to ask a question by raising your hand. I recognize Dante after Ms. Gordon.
Prime Minister, those prostitutes on Bishopgate Street, can you do something about them? The prostitute on Bishopgate Street, prostitute, the host of Bishopgate Street, can you do something about them? I cannot, I cannot sleep in night. I cannot sleep in nights. The order my step. The order my, the order my step. I have to go now and get a lock and key and lock the gates. The opening gate and the coming on the side and it take there and have sex. Yes, it's shoot. And did it come right there. So Sunday after go and get a lock and lock the gate. I had put up a senses light. No, it's shoot, where it shoot. I had put up a light. Yeah, the Bishopgate Street, on my, right by my window. I just here, then can't sleep. Have to do something about them.
Ms. Gordon, every time I visit you, I know this question comes up. And I will have you know that the church community, particularly the Boravian Church, had made a case about it already. In that they felt that the persons, the patrons who are doing that have been even desecrating the church property and they have asked about it. It really is a question for law enforcement because there's a limit to my authority and the authority of the cabinet in this particular matter. We go to parliament and we pass laws and then we have the long arm of the law, the police force. I think we're going to have to maybe invite the commissioner and his deputies to a town hall meeting like this to lean on what Ms. Simon said, that we should have more of these meetings. And so the people from the community can discuss this matter with law enforcement. Because it's not something that, I mean, I can enforce. I have no authority in law to pick up anyone. And certainly, I would not know how to go about prosecuting or even persecuting the persons who are involved in this endeavor. But I understand the concern. You have raised it with me on more than one occasion. I've heard it. And I've seen, you know, suggested evidence that things are going on in the evenings and I see the people paraded on the street. So it is something that I'm prepared to, in the new term, have. Because of course, we now see the value of this edifice in the middle of the community. And certainly, I will be able to call on Pastor Andrew and his dear wife again for another use. And have the police high command attend, or the appropriate people from the police attend and to speak to this issue.
They pull it down, the man of the, of the lamp post, they rub it down. They was there last night. No, they, no, they, yeah, they took it down. And I, I mind you, and I, every night, every night when they come on the street, they come on my window and they make noise. And I say the argument long to two, three o'clock in the morning, they there. Yes, I cannot sleep, I cannot sleep, I cannot sleep. So I call, I call police. And after police never come.
To a town hall meeting, but I see Dante's hand is still up.
Good night again. So what Ms. Gordon has said, right? You are there selling a tea for me, right? But what are your plans in providing opportunities, job opportunities? So that then I have a sell and we get better jobs? After question, actually. What are your plans for the job opportunities? And, and next question, our next question. About the school meal, the kids are complaining about it's not being cooked well or something like that. What are the plans on improving that also?
I'm glad you raised the question, Dante, about improved job opportunities. Because as part of our whole development, there are three pillars of our development that we have been emphasizing. And one of them is education. You would be aware that a few weeks back, the Prime Minister and the Minister responsible for education participated in a groundbreaking ceremony for the expansion and renewal of the Abyss facility with the gift of a £4 million gift from a benefactor, Mr. Harrison. So the government contemplates So the government contemplates that education and personal development is critical for personal advancement. So today you may be doing a job that only provides you at a certain level of income and your aspiration is to be in an upper income level and to find another job opportunity. Part of the challenge is for the individual to retool themselves. I can tell you Dante that at the last intake, my office in the community personally enrolled an additional twenty-five persons in the Yip program where people are now expanding their learning opportunities and are reequipping and retooling themselves. As a matter of fact, the story is told of a number of persons who have, through that program, have now reached the level of matriculation that they can be pursuing university programs right here, both at UE Five Islands and in the open campus. So even from the beginning, we have emphasized that early adult education, sorry, early childhood education is critical in the whole human development process. And so whereas we have already opened a major early childhood education facility in Buckley's, we have in plan, and I haven't had the chance to fully peruse the manifesto, but I'm sure it's included there, where we intend to build, at least in this first instance, another four of those facilities. So right from the cradle up to the grave, we see education as part of that whole empowerment. But not only that, we want to expand and diversify the economy. The Prime Minister at the beginning of 2021, I believe, it might have been 2022, and the years get a little fuzzy because of COVID, did change my ministerial portfolio to emphasize digitalization. We have just, through APUA, installed a fiber to the home network that spans the entire island, Barbuda is next. And what that means is that some of the new fintech and new economic opportunities that are gonna come, are gonna come from the type of small businesses that can provide services here in our own location, but provide them on a global basis. I have a friend who was married to someone who lived in Eastern Europe and the marriage didn't work out and she came back to Antigua. And when she announced to me that she came back here during COVID and I inquired of her children and how she was doing, I was pleasantly surprised to know that she was providing managerial services to companies in North American Europe from right in her home here in Antigua. Sufficient it was to be able to send her children to private school and to pay for her rent and to pay for her vehicle and to provide food. And I said, the only thing that is missing from that is your own contribution to social security and medical benefits. So I'm saying that there are other opportunities that are gonna come and what we are providing is the reference frame for all of this to happen. With the expansion that is taking place in tourism very shortly, and I think the work has begun right on Newgate Street, here along Newgate Street, global ports have begun their landside development. It is featured, the, the concept is featured in the manifesto, I know I've glanced through the pages and you will see that when that part of St. John's gets renewed, the types of businesses that are gonna be there are gonna provide other economic opportunities for young people as well. One area that is actually astounding me really, it's the construction sector. Someone asked me last evening when I was in the Crown Gardens area, what has happened to the bridge at Lower Fort Road that goes into McKinnon's? Why is it still incomplete? And the simple truth is there is not enough cement on the island. So many infrastructural projects are taking place. We are building a renal center for kidney transplants and for kidney treatment up at the old Halberton Hospital compound. Sir Joey John is actually building out his own clinic. There are a number of other construction projects that are taking place at the same time. And the volume of raw material, cement that would normally come into the island just cannot sustain the development that we have anymore. I was on a call two weeks ago with the Director of Public Works, with the contractor, Mr Atwood, with the head of Antigum History Products about trying to find enough material to advance the buildout of the bridge and couldn't be done. I said all of that to say that the construction sector and what we're talking about housing, a hundred and sixty homes between the next eighteen months between National Housing and Chappa, what other private contractors as well are doing, the government had outlined just after COVID as part of the economic recovery, that we were inviting local developers to come to the government and find a five acres piece of land that they themselves could participate in the housing development program. I kid you not Dante, there are literally thousands of persons, maybe seven, eight, ten thousand persons who are waiting the opportunity to occupy one of the types of homes that we have put on board. So for the young men, I say that construction, the construction sector is a veritable area where they could find gainful employment for the rest of their adult life because I don't think that we're gonna ever have a situation where housing development is not going to be a thing. So whether it is in commerce, whether it is in tourism, we are seeing now the redeveloped of Halcyon Cove, we have just repurposed and we acquired Jolly Beach and I put it back in service and we have some other exciting tourism developments that's gonna take place over the next coming years. So we had expect to see economic opportunities available for everyone. But I want to say it is not just for the government to provide it and you wash your foot and come. There is some preparation that has to be done and the government is providing all of the means for persons to be prepared for those opportunities, alright?
And just to reinforce the need for a culture of continuous development, there's a direct correlation between experience, qualification and pay. And I want to emphasize that there is direct correlation between experience, qualification and pay. I recognize for the most part that Antigums and Barbudans do not aspire to be involved in the home domestic security spaces and I recognize too that they also move in a way from the hotel space and you find that is mostly immigrants who are now occupying those jobs. So now the jobs are not being generated, but perhaps the jobs that Antigums and Barbudans are genuinely interested in that, you know, we're not producing enough of those jobs. And in some instances, whereas they have the ambition for higher level pay, they may not necessarily have the skill and the experience and that is why we're investing heavily in our people, that is why we're investing twenty million dollars in Abyss, so those who are more technically oriented, who are interested in a technical and vocational education, they can get their qualification from Abyss, a world-class qualification. And those who are academically inclined, we have provided opportunities at UE Five Islands and we're even providing scholarships to them to study abroad. You know, we give an average of about thirty million dollars a year in scholarship grants to assist Antigums and Barbudans to qualify at the tertiary level. And one of the areas in which we believe will provide a significant amount of high-paying jobs is the area of digitalization in which most jobs that are created in the future will have some digital component to it in healthcare, in education, infrastructure development, you name it, housing, there will be some ICT component that will require Antigums and Barbudans to have the skills to manage that component of the business. So at UE Five Islands, we have developed a new campus, that is the campus for science, computing and artificial intelligence. We've given our commitment of at least twenty-five full scholarships annually so that young Antigums and Barbudans can qualify in those spaces. There's some, even some tech, well, not too technical areas, even areas such as, let's say pool maintenance and so on, even window cleaning for that matters a business. I mean, when you look at PLH in Barbuda, by the end of the year, they may have probably close to a hundred. If I'm exaggerating, I presume most of the properties they will have a pool, they will have at least fifty pools. Now, if you're doing pool maintenance and you charge, let's say, a thousand dollars a month to maintain a pool, if you get ten of those, you can practically develop another business there. The model glass I see in the properties at PLH in Barbuda, that alone can create a significant amount of cleaning business for entrepreneurs. So outside of, you know, depending on employment, our people should also be thinking about entrepreneurship to become employers themselves and we're hoping you will seize those opportunities. I've seen so many, let's say, non-Antigums who have come here and seized those opportunities because our mindset primarily has been about being employees rather than looking for the opportunities within the public and private sectors to become employers to provide certain services. So I want all of us as Antigums and Barbudans to broaden the scope of our engagements and not to think exclusively about whether or not you can get a job, but if you can provide a service in which you can enhance your income and at the same time provide opportunities for others. But we're confident that within the next twelve months, we'll create thousands of jobs between Halcyon, which has been rebuilt by Royal Turn Sunwing, as well as Sandals, they will generate over eleven hundred jobs. And then you also have Jolly Beach, which will probably generate another four hundred jobs. So by the end of this year, you're looking at fifteen hundred new jobs in the hotel sector and there are other opportunities, again, PLH in Barbuda, they are likely to generate at least an additional four hundred jobs this year because they now have inventory, they have a number of properties that have been completed and I'm pretty sure that by the end of this year, they will be able to accommodate maybe about two hundred guests. So these opportunities have been created by a rapidly expanding economy. Those of you who may not be aware, for the last two years, we have expanded the country's economy by an average of seven point nine percent. It's the fastest growing economy in the Caribbean barring Guyana and that is because of the new oil find. And I would say here that the prospects of Antig and Barbuda are real and we're confident that Antig is now poised to get to the next level of development where more jobs will be created, better jobs will be created. And obviously the whole objective is to improve the living standards of people of Antig and Barbuda, to provide you more opportunities in healthcare, in housing, in education and at the same time to provide you with sustainable jobs and jobs in which you can earn a decent living.
And I would just want to, and forgive me for doing this, but I wanted to footnote a point that the Prime Minister made about entrepreneurship because I think when I was responding to Dante, I was looking at job creation and job opportunities, but the possibilities are endless when it comes to the Entrepreneur Development Fund. And if truth be told, the fund is literally undersubscribed. We had voted approximately five million dollars in the first instance for the fund and it's either A, people have an aversion to having that level of risk in terms of having a loan to pay back, but it is a pretty friendly fund. So far I've assisted one, well, two young entrepreneurs from the community in terms of accessing the funds. I think one of them acquired up to ten thousand dollars, which was unsecured, to start up his welding business. There's a young man in the audience here, I'm not going to point him out, he full well knows who he is and I'm very proud of him. When we were building the drains, he became interested in becoming a heavy-duty equipment operator and he became so soup, to use a local word. He literally spent days on end with the heavy-duty equipment operator and one day while I was doing an inspection, he was left alone to operate the heavy-duty equipment. I was so impressed, I called upon him and I think it's, it's still, the video is still on my social media, my Facebook page. I say that to say that the young man went on and he equipped himself and he upgraded his skills to the point where he now is a D-class operator and is earning a significant income above the normal income that you would have in the construction sector. And that again is a question of somebody with the ability, but the willingness to pursue self-development and I think because of that, he has positioned himself. The next conversation I'm having with him is that he must go the next distance of acquiring his own heavy-duty equipment and the Entrepreneur Development Fund will be there to ensure and I'm hoping that before the end of this year, he will be the proud owner of his own either backhoe or excavator such that he can continue to multiply his income and become one of the stronger men that would lead an uplift, a, a, a new family in the community and that's how I see life. So again, it's about personal development and when you do that, you can be assured that you will go higher and higher up the, the, the totem pole for economic opportunity. Any other questions? Sorry? It doesn't have to be housing related if you take the opportunity now that I'm here. I see Mr Antonio.
Minister Nicholas, before you go to Antonio, I know we're pressed, I know we're pressed for space in Fortwood and Lower Gambles, but any plans for a community center as well as, I know you spoke about playground, maybe implementing a playground, putting in, cause my son, they were playing at this playground next to, what's his name, the Papa's Oak, you know, right next to Papa's Oak, they had like a playground there. I'm not sure who it belongs to, but a few of the kids in Lower Gambles used to go there and play. I think it's private property because they keep fencing off the area. So I was just wondering, even though we're pressed for space, plans for community center, playground for the kids, you know, that, you know, recreational facilities, that sort of stuff.
Good evening gentlemen, Prime Minister, I got a question if you, so I was wondering if it's possible after this meeting, I could get a two minutes with you before I leave, sir?
That's four minutes, that's four minutes now.
Yes, well, I, I did not acknowledge the other question that was posed about the inadequacy or the, the need to improve the quality of the meals at the school meal program. I will take it on board and refer it to the appropriate authorities that they may need to do some quality checks and at least get some feedback, some three sixty feedback from the students as to whether or not it's passed the taste test. The other point that was raised is whether or not community facilities, when I was addressing the conversation about the redevelopment of, of, of the old city, I did say to Mr Cornelius that I'm hoping that they will incorporate a green space for recreation. I do believe that in this new city will come new families. You'll hear me talk about families all the times because families are the building blocks for any society. I would have unveiled a week ago when we had the public meeting in Fort Road, that the playfield, the community hub in Fort Road, I have a plan for its redevelopment. Ms Simon spoke about the lighting area on the Princess Market playfield. I do intend to have a similar plan for the Princess Market school field as well, working with the community, there are a number of persons on Rosalie Drive, there's a little Chamber of Commerce now being formed on Rosalie Drive, I'm sure you would know, some lawyers are occupying it. So I intend to appeal to their own corporate-minded spiritedness, spirit-mindedness to become involved in the community development and look at developing that sporting facility as well. So yes, the question is, we have to bear that in mind, children do need spaces to clean, safe spaces. I have developed a lifelong enemy, I think, because as you would be aware, we have had an annual summer camp, children's summer camp for a number of years, the two weeks after Carnival and the Fortwood playing facility. And I did observe that persons who were occupying the back of the facility, I observed with my own eyes, were peddling drugs to the kids and I promptly had them removed and that has, you know, engendered a little bit of vile coming my way, but I stand my ground. I am a believer, I've raised two children myself and I want to give everybody the opportunity to raise their children without that type of nastiness being imposed on our children. So I do understand the need for clean spaces for children to operate and I'm, I'm gonna commit to ensure that wherever there's a green space, that we incorporate the children. I will, if we have the opportunity and you stay back, I will post on the PowerPoint presentation for you to see the community facility, community hub, the plans for the community hub in Fort Road and I think when that is complete, I don't want to bite off too much than I can chew, but certainly we will look at. But certainly, we will look at implementing a similar project for Princess Margaret area as well. I did say that I'll have to refer it. I don't have the answers for it, but I refer it to the appropriate authorities. Mr. Friday? Complaint, yes.
Even every other day, we have to get it every four days or three days in Bishopgate Street. Why we don't, you know? I know you said to me, one day when I attack you, somebody sabotaging someplace, I don't know if it's Glaston or Prime Minister, that he could get the majority of the water at Point, and we don't get any. Because Point will be getting, Low Bishopgate Street will be getting water, and Upper Bishopgate Street is not getting, no, something is going on. I don't know.
I'm glad, I'm glad that you named the elephant in the room, and I'm glad that somebody raised this water issue. Room wasn't built in a day, Mr. Friday. And the problems that APUA encountered are threefold. One caused by the drought in that we had to find alternate means of producing portable water. And we invested heavily. What was the investment cost per? $130 million in new reverse osmosis plants. That was only one part of the problem. The other part of the problem that they faced was the distribution network. One young man challenged me just a few days ago, saying, oh, you did all the work in Spring Street and Hibiscus and so on, and our road didn't get any development. And I said, it takes a little time. I did that because in Spring Street and in Hibiscus and in Lilac, there was a problem with the pipeline. So I'm producing a little manifesto myself for the local politics in my community. We should be published in another day or two. And it will show that we did replace the pipelines in those particular areas. So if anything, when the water flows, it is cleaner, it is more portable, it doesn't have the rust. So that's one problem solved for Lawford Road. The problem we have over here in the old city, it's all in many respects. The pipelines are weak and they corroded. And so we're going to have to look at those particular challenges as well. For those of you who are paying attention, Agatha Goodwin Street was pretty much dug up right in front of Miss Moore a couple of years ago. Under my stewardship, we dug it up, went down about six feet in the ground, fixed all the water lines there and resurfaced it. The problem is the way that APUA switches the water, moves it around from the dual desalination plants. In my humble opinion, and I don't mean this in any disrespectful way, the whole idea of somebody going with one of these T-valves and turning on a valve here and turning on a valve there and turning on a valve there. We've passed that stage. We cannot any longer operate like that. So new investment is going to be required for APUA such that on a panel, the engineer will be able to say, listen, we have produced 3 million gallons of water at the new reverse osmosis plant in Bethesda when it is completed later this year. And we are sending one and a half million gallons along the way, so it goes to Seville Farm and the environment. The other one and a half million gallons, we are sending to Willicay's and that particular area. Those that we produce in in Parram, we are sending so much in this direction. And those that are coming from Fort James are in this direction. It should be done with the aid of electronic switching. No longer can we be dependent, you know? We were in cabinet one time and one of the ministers was complaining bitterly about water being out in the Gray Hill area. And it turned out that what happened, one of the staff at APUA, who was supposed to have turned on the valve, he was sick because of COVID. And nobody had replaced, had taken on his tasks. And so the valves remained closed. So while they were saying that we were pumping water there, it could never get to the residents because the valve was closed. We cannot eliminate the possibility that there may not be some mischief. Goodness knows in a political campaign, all sorts of things are confronting us. So we can't eliminate the possibility. But what I do know is that the old system of switching these valves manually has done its day. And so we're going to have to come up in addition to the $130 million. I have a feeling that the Prime Minister is going to give me some new challenges. We're going to have to find a way of implementing new technologies to fix the water problem once and for all. So not only anybody fool you and think that it is going to be an overnight fix. We are producing more water now by reverse osmosis than we have ever done in the history of Antigua. I did a program with my good friend Ambassador Hurst and pointer from some months back. And we had the head of the Meteorological Service. And he said to us that we experienced two of the driest years, I think 2020 and 2021, were the two driest years in 179 years of recorded meteorological information that was collected. 179 years, it's the driest years that we have ever received, the two of them. But for the tremendous weather that we had in September, sorry, November of 2020, when we had 18 inches of rain, that year might well have gone on as the driest year ever, but was just saved by one day's rainfall, which was 18 inches in that particular day. So the challenges are there, and where we're approaching them, we have made investments, but we're not yet out of the woods. In addition to that, now that we have the new plant down at Fort James and we intend to expand the capacity, the recent ground swells or the turbulence in the water seaside has created a problem where APUA have had to switch those plants off. And so that is the reason why we have seen some intermittent supply of water. But as the rains come back and the aquifers fill up, we will have more of what I would call a hybrid ability to produce water from multiple sources. And with the improvement that we are going to make on the distribution system, in ultimate time, we will see this, you know, current problem of water on, water off, water on, water off. It's been more than a 10-year-old problem, but we intend to solve it.
If I can just share some historical data that previous Labour Party administrations over 25-year period had added 5 million gallons a day in arid water, that is reverse osmosis. So as of 2004, we're producing 5 million gallons a day. Then came the UPP administration in 2004. And they literally mudballed the water plant tango. And we lost 2 million gallons a day in the water supply. So it meant that we're down to 3 million gallons. They added 300,000 gallons. So the net amount of water produced under the UPP was 3.3 million gallons of arid water per day. Today, we're in excess of 7 million, which means that there is no administration in the history of the country that has invested more in the water infrastructure, the arid water infrastructure than my administration. We have yet another plant to be added in the first quarter of this year, no later than the second quarter. We have already paid for it. It's a plant that will produce 3 million gallons of arid water per day. So that will take the amounts that we'll have added up to 7 million, making it the single largest investment in the history of our country in reverse osmosis water. We expect that when that plant come in stream sometime, let's say by the second quarter latest, and I say second quarter because of the delays that we've been experiencing, but we've already paid for the plant in full. We should then see a significant improvement. I think that that will actually resolve the demand for water in this country. We are concurrently repiping as well. I believe there are some areas on the island that we've started to repipe. And very shortly, APUA will be doing some work in my constituency as well as here in in Old City to replace those old pipes and obviously to have new sustainable pipes that will bring you clean water. So we have made significant progress. It's not fully resolved. I, we do accept that the distribution could be better managed because even at 7 million gallons per day, it is sufficient to supply at least 90% of the demand. But for some reason, you know, we're not quite, we haven't gotten there yet. It's an issue that we have tried to literally micromanage by calling APUA to the cabinet almost on a weekly basis to urge them to find out whatever resource issues they may have and even to recommend strategies to them in order to ensure that we can have a more consistent supply. We're hoping, however, that we see some improvement as we continue to push them. We've been advised that there may be some sabotage within the system, and I've sent a message that, you know, if it is true, and the word is if, we expect those who are involved in that malpractice to discontinue that practice. I mean, we know that valves have been shut off for weeks. I mean, I was in Parram campaigning just over a week ago. And the residents there said to me that they had not had water for weeks. Now, the plant at Krabs is producing 4 million gallons of water per day. So I immediately called Mr. Martin to find out what is going on. I mean, how can they not have water when 4 million waters literally passing them on a daily basis? Only to learn subsequently that it's a valve that was turned off. Now, I don't know if it's human error, but you know, there are lots of people speculating that there are maybe a couple of, or maybe a handful of UPP elements within the water division who are trying to make us look bad. And the whole idea is to undermine the supply. And in the unlikely event the UPP were to win, then automatically the water supply would be solved, getting at water 24/7. So again, if the information is indeed correct, you know, we are asking those individuals to cease and desist. Because, you know, look, man, I mean, this is a basic service. We have made investments. And we expect them to, you know, operate professionally and to do what they have to do and not to sabotage the process. If it is not true, I stand corrected. And what needs to be done to resolve this issue as soon as, in the shortest possible time, we are committed to doing so.
Thank you very much. Our time together seems to have been quickly spent, save and except there is another person question. I know many of you are, some of you are aching to see the PM, and I would certainly want to give you the opportunity to do that. I certainly want to put on the screen as well, the model of the house, and I'll take this will be the penultimate question. And if we're pressed, I'll take another question and then we'll go to the close.
Question, Minister. I see, I live in the community and I'm a father figure to my children, and I see what's missing because a lot of parents don't have the resources. So I was wondering if you had in mind for a community center, what can assist the kids? Instead of they just be on the street, you know, because a lot of the time, parents go to work from in the morning, they don't reach them in the night. See if you have some kind of assistant after school that can take them off the street and even assist them with homework or whatever, or even just a next home to go to. Because a lot of people don't have the money to structure nothing in their home. So I was wondering if you have anything in mind that to assist the kids, you know?
You would be aware, Mr. Antonio, that I've had some challenges with the remodeled facility that I use on Coldecker and Gambles. And but for a bit of legislative change that we have to make, we just ran out of time on this legislative clock. But when that is complete, I think I would be in a position to finally open the center in Gambles and to provide those type of facilities. It is small in comparison to the rest of the community. And I know the history of this city is well enough to know that there are three distinct groups of people. There's the old city people, there is the Gambles people, and then there's the Fortwood people. So we may have to use some small community centers to facilitate that. Just east of the playfield in Fort Road, the Prime Minister and I would have visited one of the landowners and we we made certain overtures and he seemed willing to look at it. So basically acquiring that piece of land adjacent to the football field lends itself to the development of a community center there. The community hub itself have facilities for playground for the children, but you are correct to be able to have a homework center even for a small creche for mothers who have to attend to work to take care of their children, their small children. We may have to look at building such a community center in the heart of the community over there to be able to accommodate that. But this is something that is on the scope that I would certainly have to look at. But I think very early before the end of the second quarter, the facilities in Gambles that I'm using as part of my office as well whenever I come to the community, it has a facility to provide training and for homework center. And I do intend to name that training facility off of one of the the better educators that I know, Mr. Winston Henry, who has been an industrial arts teacher across the length and breadth of Antigua. Everywhere I go with him, people refer to him as teacher. So in recognition of his contribution to education, I want to commit that learning facility in his name to assist students who would need assistance for, whether it is in math or any other area, to be able to do that. So yes, the plan is there for that. But I have to complete the legal process so that we can finally complete the process of acquiring the land so that we have no more interruptions or disruptions. Yeah? One final question from the indefatigable blind Richard.
Sir Nicholas, that dilapidated lot just on Dickerson Bay Street with the St. John's Nursery. What plans you have for that? And there are two roads on Dickerson Bay Street, one in from Gambles into Dickerson Bay Street with their dead end. Is it possible you can actually bring those roads? You know, chance for them out onto the main road, which is Dickerson Bay Street, so have in it going in and out rather than have a dead end?
The old school west of the Princess Margaret Playing Field was allocated for the development of a business. And I think that the gentleman is actually pulling his business case together. He did approach the Prime Minister and myself. And we felt that we needed a larger space to accommodate the children. So inasmuch as we're thinking of early childhood education, there is an area just west of the Tamarins at the Antigua Grammar School, close to the Antigua Grammar School. It's facing, in fact, we were the former, what's it called, Miss Francis School, preschool. It's a neighborhood where we will probably build a significantly large early childhood education facility there. But insofar as a community facility, based on what Mr. Antonio described, I would say that the next suitable place for that to complement what I'm doing in Gambles would be in the Fort Road area adjacent to the playing field. Insofar as the facilities here in the old city, I have to say to Pastor Andrew, I actually stumbled upon the niceness of this facility. One evening when I was visiting myself and Romy and a couple of the guys were out on the block talking. And it started to rain and we came in here in a shelter and I felt rather nice. So if it is that we could have an engagement, and I know the church is very community-minded, and that it lends itself, in my humble opinion, to some type of facility. What it needs is people to be able to provide the services. So if it is that the church is of a mind to lend in its services more to the community and to have what some Catholics would normally talk about liberation theology, if the church is mindful of doing that, I wouldn't have any difficulty in supporting a program, working with the church to augment this facility as part of a community outreach and provide the same services that Mr. Antonio has in mind for children. You know, if what Latoya asks us to do is to have more of these town hall meetings, more of these ideas would come out and then we can take them to fruition. So Latoya, if nothing else that you have done for me tonight is to give me the impetus to have more of these public consultations and this type of town hall meetings. I did say that was the last question, Blind? Oh, the dead end road, sorry, yes. So that we do not create a traffic problem, it may only be feasible to put another one in to complement the one that goes in front of Princess Margaret School, but to, But two, they're pretty close to each other. And if we had the traffic coming through those trees and coming onto Dickerson Bay Street with all of that containerized traffic coming up the road, it may create, in any case, if something is going to be done, the traffic department or the Royal Police Force will have to be consulted. So it's not a decision that I could make on my own, but I see the value of the comment that you make. And we'll look at that. Oh, yes, someone had actually sent us via Facebook a question as to whether or not with the objective that the government has by 2030 to have more than 20% of our energy consumption come from renewable sources, whether or not in the housing development, redevelopment contemplated for this area, whether or not we would put solar panels on the roofs of these buildings and to have an exchange in the grid. This has to be the new approach that we're going to have to deploy within APUA. Part of the challenge that we have though, Mr. Gardner, if you're listening, is that APUA is heavily invested in fossil fuel. We have some long-term financial commitments, including the fact that we had to extend one of those long-term commitments because we were saddled with a $70 million debt imposing us by the Privy Council based on a previous error that was made by our predecessors. And that error had to do with the fact that they acquired the Chinese plant while at the same time had had a commitment from APC. And that ended up in a legal problem that imposed a $70 million cost on APUA, which in order to worm ourselves out of that problem, we were obliged to extend that agreement for a longer period in the future than we had catered in the first instance. But safe to say that it is still our objective of having that blend. And by 2030, we still want to be able to do that. And how we do that, there are two options that are available. One that we call net billing or net metering. Those are the two options. I wouldn't go into the differences between them at the moment. But the ratio has got to be set in such a way that it will cause homeowners to want to make the investment to be able to do the recovery, to get the recovery from the surplus energy that they produce. But we're a little way away from that. And it is going to be something that I'm sure is going to be on the study in the near term.
Just said, the ambition is to reduce our carbon footprint by 50% by 2030 and to become carbon neutral by 2040. So it means that we have to transition pretty rapidly. One of the things we have agreed to recently was to do a PPA with a partnership between APC and a US firm by the name of Eagle. And they are currently constructing an LNG plant as liquid natural gas, which will be operational within a matter of months. So that in itself will help to significantly reduce our carbon footprint as we move away from the burning of heavy fuels. And you know too that we have invested in at least three renewable energy plants. We had the PV energy plant, 10 megs. We also had one that was funded by the UAE. That's another eight megs, is a combination of wind and solar. And that has been implemented. There's also one in Barbuda, an energy plant in Barbuda, which powers Barbuda for about 15 hours per day. It includes batteries. And we have another loan that was approved by the UAE government to provide another 15 million US dollars to help us with that transition. So we'll be moving quickly to transition to renewables and to become carbon neutral by 2040.
Yes, so that having been said, I want to take the opportunity to thank each of you for first of all attending, for being so attentive and for the questions that you pose. I am hoping and trusting that it was of similar value to you as it was to me to know that where the rubber hits the road, that there is mutual purpose here. And I want to ensure that the team that I work with, and I'm proud to be a part of the Antigua Barbuda Labour Party team and to have the Prime Minister as our leader. He has challenged each of us to be the best that we can be. I'm not afraid of hard work. And I could not pass tonight without saying to the residents from this community, my stewardship is before you. It's bare for all to see. I am your humble servant and I crave your indulgence for another term where I will continue to do this work. So thank you very much. And I look forward to working along with you in the coming term. Say it again? I will say though, the only regret that I have, I did not bring any refreshments because I see you here for so long. But I am going to give you the opportunity to mix and blend with the PM a little bit while I put the images on the screen for you to see what the plan looks like.